Good evening, everybody. This is the zoning board of adjustment. It is Monday, April 5th, 2021. We're here at the great hall town of Wolfboro. This is a virtual and in-person meeting, 84 South Main Street, Wolfboro. I'm just going to, all the board members, can you guys hear me in the background there? Everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just going to read this small statement about, pertains to COVID-19 and meetings. The zoning board will be meeting in a hybrid access meeting allowing for members in the public to access and participate in the meeting via in-person attendance at the Wolfboro Town Hall or via go-to-meeting through login information on the wolfboronh.us homepage. If attending in person at the Town Hall, please be advised of face masks are strongly encouraged but not required, and that social distancing shall be practiced. The meeting room will be arranged for socially-distanced seating and areas will be disinfected both before and after meetings. Further occupancy will be limited to the seats available in the Town Hall, approximately 25 with 6 feet in separation. Seating is first come, first served. Please call 569-5970 or email planningdirector@wolfboronh.us for more questions. All zoning meetings are available for live viewing on the Wolfboro Community TV Channel 25 or on the WCTV YouTube channel. As required by RSA, the zoning board hereby notifies the following projects. And tonight we have four public hearings, so I will start with a roll call of members. And we have, for the members that are virtual, if you would just state that you're present and where you are and that you're alone or who is in the room with you. So we'll start with Audrey Klein.
I'm present. I'm alone in the room.
Tim Cronin.
I'm present here and no one is in the room. And please give me a little bit of space. I'm on a delay as I'm on a satellite, so there's a couple of seconds of lag.
Thanks, Tim. Sarah Silk.
I'm here and I have no one in the room with me.
Okay, and Suzanne Ryan.
I'm present at my home. I have no one here with me and I guess that's it.
Thank you. Okay, the first public hearing. Tim, would you like to read the announcement?
Luke?
Yes.
Yes, first public hearing.
Suzanne? Hold on, Tim. Suzanne?
No, it's Sarah.
Sarah, sorry.
Yeah, just a quick question. Usually the first meeting, we have a review of our bylaws, which we didn't get in this packet, and we also have to vote for officers, and I didn't see that on the agenda as well.
I was, I was going to bring that up in the new information at the bottom there, but I was going to set a date, if everyone was comfortable with it, that we would elect officers at the first meeting in May, our only meeting in May, if that was okay. Do we have the bylaws here at Tavis tonight or?
I don't have them printed out, no. I can probably look for them and get them out to people.
Does that work for you, Sarah?
Yeah, I guess it does because it wasn't noticed on the agenda.
Okay.
But usually we do it, you know, it's the tradition that we do it after the board is selectmen and all the people that have voted in in March have voted in. Usually we do it at our next meeting, but that's fine with me, but I think we should poll the rest of the members.
Tim, are you okay with that, doing it at the next meeting, setting it for the next meeting?
I'm definitely fine with that also.
Audrey?
Yes, that's fine.
And Suzanne?
Well, could do it at the end of this meeting, but if the majority wants to do it the first meeting in May, then so be it.
Okay. Tim, do you want to go ahead and read the minutes, I mean, read for the first public hearing?
Yes, first public hearing is Gino Rinaldi, 67 Barney Road, tax map number 203-5, case number 02-SC-21, public hearing for a special exception under Article 4, Chapter 175, Section 43(c) and (j) of the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance to increase the height of an existing nonconforming structure more than 25%.
Okay, thank you. Everyone has visited this.
And Luke, I see there's a.
Go ahead.
There's an application withdrawal on this particular item, so are we not hearing this tonight?
That was for the, that was for just one part of it. We're still hearing the.
No, the application for a variance has been withdrawn and in its place, they've been replaced with the special exception requested this evening.
Okay.
Is the applicant here?
Oh, I didn't read it that way. I don't know if I'm the only member that misunderstood. I read it that it was just a withdrawal. I didn't, and I thought the attached information was just a duplication of what we had.
No, an application was originally submitted in February for a variance for front and side yard setbacks. The board continued that to a date specific, that being March 1st, 2021. After the board concluded its February meeting, the applicant conferred with staff and then withdrew the variance application and submitted a special exception for consideration tonight.
Does everybody else understand, did everyone else understood the material?
I did.
Yeah.
I didn't. When I read the letter that said they'd withdrawn, I thought they'd withdrawn everything, so I misunderstood it as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here.
Okay, the applicant like to speak to the application?
Can I, can I have, have a couple of comments first before you open the floor to the applicant?
Sure, Audrey.
Just a couple of notes on the memorandum, just so they can be corrected for the record. Under zoning authority, I believe this says it's in the shorefront residential district. So I believe it's in the residential district. And then on the bottom paragraph before the numbered parts underneath, it causes a variance request, so that it just needs to be changed to a special exception.
How was it advertised?
Advertised as a special exception.
Yeah, it was advertised as a special exception. And then I don't know what the protocol would be, but I would like to have a conversation about whether this is a complete application before we open the hearing.
Okay.
I would agree.
Audrey, since you're the one bringing it up, why don't you go ahead and?
Yep, okay. Under the special exception requirements, 175-43a1b, it requires a survey be done for every special exception application, and I don't see a survey included in our material. Also, I would like to, I think there was a question when this applicant was here before that still stands, and that is the wetlands delineation was done by a certified wetland scientist as required under 175-6ac1. So my question is, is this application complete without those, especially without the survey that's required in the special exception section specifically?
Tavis?
Staff was willing to accept the application without a survey as the existing building is in its existing state. Staff would recommend that if approved, a condition be that the survey be done to memorialize the existing foundation footprint to make sure that there was no expansion beyond what the board was able to approve. In terms of the wetland setbacks, the wetlands are identified not by a wetland scientist but by a soil scientist, and the structure is remaining and being proposed to remain in its exact footprint. Even if there were a wetland buffer impact, either of the existing structure or the proposed structure, such would be the very nature of a legal existing nonconforming situation that the applicant is proposing to expand within the same footprint of the structure. So staff was not concerned about having a wetlands map. Also, at the time that the application was submitted, it was impossible to do a wetlands investigation. Such could be done at this time now that everything has melted and thawed.
So I disagree with part of that, and that is if the wetlands are not done by a certified wetland scientist, we don't know whether this is, has the same buffer area, and there are, there's a restriction for expanding in a three-dimensional direction under 175.7e if it's within 75-foot buffer, which we don't know because it hasn't been delineated by a certified wetland scientist as required under the ordinance.
I would like to make a motion. I would move that the application is incomplete at this time and that it be returned to the applicant with the items that Ms. Audrey stated. And that we, we have the option of denying it without prejudice, but I prefer not to do that. I prefer to have it returned.
Suzanne, is that a continuance or, I'm not sure what a return actually is?
Well, we haven't opened the public hearing. If we open the public hearing, we'll have to make a decision as to approve or disapprove. So the best solution would be for the applicant to withdraw it.
Tavis?
But if he chooses not to withdraw it.
Opening the public hearing does not obligate the board to take action this evening. Opening the public hearing allows the board to continue to a date specific where additional information could be provided. Not accepting the application as complete does not allow the board to continue any public hearing to a date specific and require new payment of all the application fees and public notice fee.
So right now we have a motion on the floor made by Suzanne. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, so now we have discussion.
I would like to see it returned to the applicant, continue to a date specific to save them any additional filing fees, and I guess my question is, is it reasonable to expect that they could get the information we need in one month's time, or do we need to continue it for two months? I don't know if Tavis can answer that or not.
Tavis can't answer that because Tavis isn't the wetland scientist nor a surveyor nor the one being hired to do it.
Indeed.
So it could be continued for one month, and it would be up to the applicant to see if that timeline were to work. Otherwise, they could continue or request a continuance another month.
What about, do we, does the zoning board have a clock like the planning board?
Yes, it's on the website.
Well, would you care to enlighten us as to what that is? Is it like 30 days or 60 days where we have to make a decision?
You only have to make a decision once you close a public hearing. So until you open the public hearing, you haven't closed it, and only after the close of the public hearing do you have a certain amount of time to act. So there's no clock at the moment.
I just want to make sure.
Well, I will make, I will.
Go ahead, Suzanne.
Oh, go ahead.
I just want to make sure we stay on the motion that we're debating just on the motion right now, which is a motion to not hear this tonight. So go ahead, Suzanne.
Yeah, it was a motion to return the application. It's probably six of one half a dozen of the other, but we would be putting ourselves in the box if we open the hearing and continue. It puts more of an obligation on us. I'm torn as would.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like to, I don't like the feeling of having to make the person make a whole new application and a new application fee. It doesn't really, I don't think that really brings anything to the table, even though I feel like this information was pretty much on the table and known after our last meeting. So I'm a little discouraged that it wasn't provided. However, I would, I would not be inclined to just return the application.
Okay, that helps. I'm withdrawing my motion. Sarah, would you withdraw your second?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll make a new motion that, well, I will wait, I will wait for the public hearing to be open, at which time then I would make a motion to continue.
Okay.
Luke?
Yes, Sarah.
Could I ask a clarification from Tavis again? If we open the public hearing, then we only have 60 days, which would mean that if they could not get their, their information within 60 days, we'd have to deny it? Or can, would it be better to, for the applicant to continue it at this point? And if necessary, we could continue it again? I'm thinking of the applicant here, and like Audrey said, I don't want him to have to reapply and pay all those fees again if it's not necessary.
The board.
And I said that the applicant is going to request a continuance, not the board. So if we open the public hearing, the applicant does not want to request a continuance and wants us to hear this and make a decision, I guess that's what we have to do, or the applicant can decide to continue, request a continuance, I think either now or after we open the public hearing.
Well, the other option that would come into play is a discussion of the reference section, specifically 175.7e, as to whether or not that even applies, because going through that, I'm at the same place I was before, and it's very clear, and I agree, that as it says, repair or replacement of a legal existing pre-existing use or structure. So if you want to take down something you have and put it back immediately, you have to keep the same three-dimensional envelope. That does not even seem to hold water under the same pretense, which is tonight, which is 175.43, that allows you to expand a legal existing nonconforming structure. So if I need to go down that rabbit hole, if you will, with legal counsel to find out if it's still considered repair or replacement, i.e., have a can, remove a can, build a can, then why does 175.43 allow you to get a special exception to increase that? That's not, that's not, that's not a discussion for the board tonight, because that's not the notice question for the board to consider tonight, but that does give the applicant something else to evaluate in contemplating a request for continuance. So it seems if the applicant is willing and the board is willing, that the board could accept the application as complete for the purposes of continuing to a date specific with the understanding that the survey and wetland scientist delineation are completed or written statement from town council to the contrary with respect to both be submitted to the board in time for the next meeting where it's available. Whether that requires another continuance or not, so be it.
How does the board feel about that?
I think that's the best option. If we can get council's opinion on these sections, that would be the final answer.
Tim?
I'm in agreement with Tavis.
Someone can say so moved, and I'll help Mary Jane with the minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
The only discussion I would have is the timeframe. There's, oh, well, then again, he may not need a soil scientist, is what you're saying, right, Tavis?
I don't know what the schedule is going to be, if there is a schedule for a soil scientist and the other things that were asked for, so for what it's worth, I would.
Well, I can, I can tell you, I can tell you, to get a surveyor or a soil scientist now is like very, very limited as far as getting them to come do work for you. So it's not going to be in a month. It would be amazing.
Want to start with, want to start, start with May and go to June if you need to?
The applicant is, is going to start, we'd like to start with May, is getting back on the schedule for May, see how we can do, and if we have to push it, we can push it to June if he needs to go out to that. So if that is amenable to everyone, that's what the applicant would be willing to do. So the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Audrey, I saw your hand up at one point. Do you have any further discussion?
No.
Okay. Okay, seeing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Sarah Silk?
Aye.
Audrey?
Yes.
Tim Cronin?
Yep.
Suzanne Ryan?
Yes.
Yes, and yes for myself.
Call you in the morning. Call you in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case. Gregory Ry 2017 Revocable Trust, 19 Luando Lane, tax map and lot number 242-16, case number 03-SC-21, public hearing for a special exception under Article 4, Chapter 175, Section 43(c) and (j) of the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance to increase the height of an existing nonconforming more than 25%.
Thank you, Tim. Is the, Mr. Reins, you're here for the applicant?
Excuse me, Luke, do you want a poll to see who viewed this?
Yes, absolutely. Tip, I'll do it. So this was, the address was 19 Luando Lane. Sarah, did you get up there today or have you seen the property?
I went up, I went up there last week.
Okay. Audrey?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Tim?
Yep, I did.
And Suzanne?
Yes, I did twice.
Excellent, and I was there today. Mr. Reins, would you like to start with your presentation? Do we want him at the podium for this or?
Well, it's up to him. I just want to make sure the mic gets on.
Turn that mic on over there, please.
So do you, do you want, Tavis, can you put the plan up or do you want me to put it up here? All right. Everybody hear me okay? All right, good evening. For the record, I'm Jim Reins from White Mountain Survey and Engineering, and I'm here representing the Gregory Ry 2017 Revocable Trust in their application for a special exception per Article Roman IV, Section 175.43.1j, to expand vertically within the setback by more than 25%. The property in question is located at 19 Luando Lane, tax map 242, lot 16. The lot is 0.36 acres in size with approximately 83 feet of waterfrontage by the shore, 80 feet straight line, and consequently, the setbacks, the side yard setbacks are 15 feet, 50 feet from the shoreline and 30 feet from the road. The existing structure is 7.4 feet from the shoreline and is two stories in height. It is also 11 feet from the northerly boundary. There is also an existing bunk house that is one story and is 11.9 feet from the southerly boundary line. The proposal is to raise the existing home and move it back from 7.4 feet to 18.2 feet. We will increase the northerly setback from 11 feet to 14.4 feet. We will eliminate the bunk house and therefore eliminate the southerly setback violation. We will reduce the percentage of lot coverage from 35.5% down to 26.3% through the use of porous pavement technologies. And we are, the proposed home right now is on an onsite sewage disposal system that's a predated system, and it draws lake water, and the proposed home will be tied into the municipal sewer and municipal water, eliminating any onsite treatment. The proposed structure is also two stories, but it's going to climb up the hill and it will have a walkout. The area that I've shown in yellow on the diagram is the area that is forward of the setback line that is subject to this application. That's, that's an overview. Before I start to go through the criteria, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board or the public may have.
I have one. Perhaps, perhaps Jim, you misspoke or something's mis-typed here? You said 3.6 acres and it's .36 according to the plan?
Yes, it is .36. If I said something different, I misspoke.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Any members of the?
Luke, I have a question.
Go ahead.
What's the degree of slope on this lot?
It averages about 16 or 17%.
16 to 17%.
Luke, before you open the public hearing, do you want Jim to go through the criteria?
I already opened it, but Jim, yeah, if you want to go through the criteria.
Yes, so I will go through the.
Actually, I'd rather ask some questions first.
Okay, go ahead.
Before the criteria, does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay. Just to tag on to Sarah's comment, because I did look at the steep slope thing because I wasn't familiar with it, but there's not enough area being disturbed for have a steep slope piece, you know, piece to this project. The steep slope does start at about 15%, but there's not enough area coverage to make that come into play. Jim, so since this is basically, we're doing a special exception for an increase in height for the building, so we're only looking at that small area of the new area that overlaps the old area next to the shore as far as this, this approval is concerned, correct?
That is correct.
Can you tell me, is the, is the existing floor levels, are they going to go up as well, or is it just increasing the, the second floor height, so to speak?
Well, it's going to have a walk. Go ahead.
It kind of has a walkout already by the look of it. And what I'm kind of missing with these plans is how does this relate to the, to the neighbors? slope does start at about 15 percent, but there's not enough area coverage to make that come into play. Um, Jim, so, since this is basically, we're, we're, um, doing a special exception for an increase in height, um, for the building, um, so we're only looking at that small area of the new area that overlaps the old area next to the shore, as far as this, this approval is concerned, correct?
That is correct.
Can you tell me, um, is the, um, is the existing floor levels, are they going to go up as well, or is it just, um, increasing the, the root, uh, the second floor height, so to speak?
Uh, well, it's gonna have a walk... Go ahead.
It, it kinda has a walkout already, by the look of it, and what I'm kinda missing with these plans is, how does this relate, um, to the, to the neighbor's house, as far as how, you know, how much higher is it going to be with respect to that than it is now? Because the special exception talks about area, even though we're looking at height. You know what I mean?
Yeah, so, the, obviously, as you've probably seen from the abutters list, uh, the, all of the abutters are family, and none of them are in opposition to this, the, um, and I submitted some photographs of the existing structure, which, since you've been down there, you see that it's a two-story structure now. The difference is that there will be a walkout, whereas beneath the porch now, it's, it's a lattice area. So while it's pushed back, and then it will step up the hill, so it's still two stories, and to be perfectly frank, it was so complicated to determine the difference in, in height between the existing structure, the existing two-story structure and the proposed two-story structure. We simply felt it was, uh, it was better to try and just come in and request the relief, because I wasn't clear on how we could possibly calculate whether we had exceeded it by 25 percent. I don't think it's gonna be 25 percent higher, but the area that's forward of it is more than a 25 percent area that's, the height is going to be changed in some fashion, and I don't know that it will be materially higher than the existing structure, but it is, it, the, the whole structure is, it steps up the hill, of course, we're only concerned about the, the yellow part in the front, but, that, that's really, Audrey, why, why we filed this, is we couldn't, couldn't clearly make that computation.
I could tell that it was a difficult one, because, you know, I mean, it's a two-story house already, except for some of the little wings, so between, you know, raising the first floor level, because you're putting some amount of space underneath, and potentially, you know, making the whole second floor, second floor, it, it really is hard to tell whether you even actually need the special exception, like you said. Um, I don't think it's very clear in the ordinance how you're supposed to go about figuring 25 percent of a volumetric measurement, which is not what I think that it's looking for. I think, you're right, it's looking for the two-dimensional area of 25 percent, yet we're looking at pushing up the height, which is kinda contradictory.
Right, yeah, I, I don't disagree, and, and so, we, in this application, we just felt, we can't calculate it, and if somebody challenged it, it would be difficult to defend it, so we felt, we, we need to, we need to make this request.
Yeah, I can see why you came to that conclusion. That's all I have.
The, the only other thing I'll, I'll speak to is, there was the question, and Audrey spoke to it, about the steep slopes ordinance, and there is a steep slope zoning map, and, and this lot does not fall in that, that zone. So, that was another point I just wanted to make.
Suzanne, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. Um, Jim used the terminology, "the addition is gonna crawl up the hill." So, are you, there, I sent, uh, pictures to Tavis of, from the parking lot, looking down towards the lake, and I counted about 20 trees that are gonna have to come out. So, I, and, there's ledge there. So, obviously, the trees come out, but are you gonna be excavating that ledge, and what kind of, like, a foundation or anything that's gonna go, how is that building gonna sit on that hill, and what are you gonna do to excavate that site, to make it work?
Well, I, I mean, obviously, there will be excavation, potentially some blasting, but I, that's really not, not the purpose of the, of the discussion.
Suzanne, that's not really in the purview of this, of this exception.
Well, it, it, it is, um, within the special exception, it talks to, uh, adequate usable space, and absence of environmental constraints, so I think we can talk about the environment. It, it, it isn't, it, it, what we've got is a reconstruction of, uh, a property that's on the shoreline, so I think we do need to look at the site.
Well, I, I can say that the, uh, that the layout is going to comply with the Shoreland Protection Act, and both the town and the state, and their concern is, you know, site disturbance, erosion control, stormwater mitigation, and we are reducing the percentage of impervious lot coverage, uh, and improving the, all of the setbacks, so I think we're addressing all of the health, safety, and, and general welfare, uh, questions that most zoning ordinances are designed to, uh, to take care of.
I'm gonna let, uh, Jim go through the criteria now, we can, we can follow up with questions after.
Well, just, just, just let me, just, just let me point out, there is Section 175-67, and it's called redevelopment, and I think that that plays into this application. I think it, it beholds us, beholden upon us, to, uh, address some of those issues. But, go ahead.
Jim, go ahead with the application.
Okay. Um, so in order to demonstrate that we have satisfied the, the criteria for the special exception, we have to first, uh, there's eight criteria, the first one is site suitability, uh, that the specific site is appropriate location for the proposed use, which includes adequate, uh, usable space, adequate access, and absence of environmental constraints, such as floodplains, steep slopes, et cetera. As I've said, the, uh, the site is presently developed as a single-family with a detached bunkhouse. This proposed, proposal will continue the same use, residential, and eliminate the bunkhouse. The replacement home will be more nearly conforming with horizontal, horizontally, while altering the roof lines to create a walkout basement. The slope of the land averages 16 to 17 percent in the development area, and is above the floodplain. Uh, we are also making the home fully compliant with the southerly setback, increasing the setback to the shoreline by 10.8 feet, and the northerly setback by 3.4 feet, thereby reducing the non-conforming structure footprint by 346.2 feet, and we are reducing the overall lot coverage by, from 35.5 percent to 26.3 percent, which is a 1,129 square foot reduction. So for that reason, we believe that we've demonstrated the, the site is suitable. In terms, number two is, uh, the immediate neighborhood impact, and that the proposal is not detrimental, injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the abutting properties in particular, and to the neighborhood in general, and typical impacts which extend beyond the property. A proposed site include excessive trip generation, noise of vibration, dust, heat, glare, smoke, fumes, odors, or inappropriate hours of operation. And when this project is completed as proposed, it will not have a detrimental impact on the surrounding neighboring properties. Since the law is presently developed, the use of, uh, post-construction will be similar to the existing use, and similar to the abutting properties. There will be noise and traffic during construction, but that is no different than any other construction project, and it has a finite duration. Number three, that there will be no undue nuisance or serious hazard to pedestrian or vehicular traffic, including the location and design of accessways and off-street parking, and when completed, this project as proposed will not create any undue nuisance or serious hazard to pedestrian or vehicular traffic, since there will be no change from the existing condition in terms of use. Number four, availability of public services and facilities, that the following services and facilities are available and adequate to serve the needs of, of the use designed and proposed, and that includes sewer, water, storm drainage, fire protection, police protection, streets, parks, and schools. So the existing home, as I mentioned, is currently served by lake water and onsite sewage disposal system of an unknown age and composition. Uh, there is no stormwater mitigation, and this proposal proposes to tie into the municipal sewer and water with this redevelopment. Uh, the decision, uh, on whether to tie into the municipal sewer down Luando Lane, where , uh, the sewer was just extended, or to go up through green leaf development, has not yet been determined, but either way, it's going to be on municipal sewer and water. Uh, we're, we're reducing the impervious lot coverage by 1,129 square feet, using porous pavement and stormwater mitigation and stormwater drainage, which will be designed to meet the, uh, NHDES Shoreland Water Quality Protection Act as part of the permitting process. So there will be no change in access to the site for fire or police, and it will remain as, uh, suitable for the proposed use, and the use will have no negative impacts on the streets, parks, or schools. Number five, appropriateness of the site plan, considerations shall be given to the following: parking scheme, traffic, open space, fencing, screening, landscaping, signage, uh, commercial vehicles, light impact. Since this is a residential use, and this criterion is, uh, intended to address projects requiring site plan applications, it is not particularly applicable to this application. However, the proposed improvements have been designed, working with the existing site as developed, to make appropriate use of the space and improve the overall horizontal zoning encroachments compared with the existing conditions. Number six, immediate neighborhood integrity, uh, that the use has established, the uses and established use patterns be weighed with recent trends in the neighborhood. Approval of this, uh, request will be consistent with recent changes in the redevelopment trends in the neighborhood, and will not negatively impact the neighborhood integrity. Uh, number seven, impact on property values, the proposed use will not cause or contribute to a decline in property values of the adjacent properties. Uh, this proposal will have no negative impact to the adjacent property values. By employing stormwater mitigation where none presently exists, and eliminating the old onsite sewage disposal system and tying into municipal sewer, we are improving both the groundwater and the surface water quality, which benefit all property owners and users of the lake. These types of water quality enhancements and new construction typically increase the value of the surrounding property, which has a neutral or negative impact on the surrounding values. For this reason, the proposed use will not contribute to a decline in property values of the adjacent properties. And number eight, the proposed use or structure is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance and the intent of the master plan. And this request is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, which allows for the redevelopment of lots with non-conforming structures, and vertical expansion of non-conforming footprints greater than 25 percent by special exception. Since we are eliminating the existing bunkhouse, improving existing setbacks, and making this request for a special exception for the vertical expansion, this proposal is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance and the intent of the master plan. Since the use is a single, is residential and single-family residences are, are permitted in this zone, it is consistent with the master plan as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, the public hearing's open, if there's members of the public that have any questions, comments, questions, please, uh, speak up. Board members, any, Suzanne, Sarah?
Yes, I have a question here. We have, sorry, we have this new structure that's gonna be built, where the old structure was built, and then the bunkhouse is going away, but I'm pretty concerned about all this extra roofing and the runoff, and, uh, I have a question about pervious surfaces, do they have to be maintained in, in order to retain their perviousness? Is this a case of, it's gonna be great when they first install it, but then if it's not maintained...
Separate question.
...that then it will lose its pervious nature and become impervious, because it just looks like there's an awful lot of additional runoff, and I have a lot, a lot of concern about what's gonna happen when they tear the old one down and they put the new one in, and it's, um, a very constrained lot, it's gonna be very difficult for, um, building and demolishing, and, uh, it looks, you know, right now, the thing they're demolishing is just a matter of inches off of the lake, and it just seems like there's gonna be a lot of impact right away, and then if they're constituting this pervious surface, is that something that has to be maintained? I just recall all the discussions they had over at Kingswood High School, and the special parking lot they had there, the fact that you, you had to put certain things on it when you were applying a snow removal, you had to plow it a certain way, and all that other stuff, and I'm just wondering if this pervious surface isn't smoke and mirrors, because in three or four years, it will become impervious, because it's not maintained.
Well, ju- just as you have to paint your house and, and keep up with the upkeep, you absolutely have to maintain, uh, the, the porous pavement and your, your stone drip edges, all of that, it's, you know, you have to remove the leaves that, and, and pine needles and things that end up in them, and the porous pavement, they recommend a vacuuming, uh, once a year at a minimum, uh, so yes, there, there will be maintenance that has to, uh, go on, just as it is with any, anything that we make.
And, and Jim, just, just to be realistic here, does it ever happen?
I beg your pardon?
To be realistic, does this ever happen? Do the landowners actually...
Yeah, I, I know, I know Kingswood hires, that's, it's created a new industry, uh, for, uh, companies that go around and vacuum these porous pavements, uh, and I know that Kingswood has it done twice a year.
I think it's important to note here, too, and I, I just wanna, just to verify this with Jim, but, you know, the, the, the existing structure, it says house, living space only, 1,128 square feet, the new structure's virtually the same, 1,293, and you take away the bunk space, bunkhouse space, it's, it's the same, it's the same space, square footage, and you're reducing, in this plan, you're reducing the impact on the, by, by having more, the lot coverage is being reduced by almost 10 percent, nine and a half percent, something like that, those are...
Yes, yeah, we're, we're reducing it from the 35.5 down to, yeah, 26.3, so yes.
But a proportion of that reduction is done in a manner that only is gonna work if it's maintained, and, and it, every little bit of pervious surface is very sorely needed on this lot, and you can see the ledge sticking out everywhere.
Well, it certainly would be within the power of the board to create a condition that, you know, that have to be maintained, I believe.
I'm, I'm gonna disagree with the applicant there, the zoning board is looking at the special exception to consider a height increase tonight only. There's a shoreline permit, there is a building permit, um, I'm a little upset that the statement has already been made by the board, that applicant isn't going to do something they're proposing to do. I really don't think it's appropriate for any board to be saying that of an applicant. That's just a personal opinion, that's not an official staff position. Keep in mind, this has received a shoreline permit from the state and the town, and it's comports with all of the regulations but for the fact that there's an increase in height of arguably more than 25 percent.
Perhaps, perhaps that would've been nice to get copies of those approvals, so we wouldn't be having this discussion.
The zoning board is not here to determine the site plan approval or the development of a lot, the zoning board is to judge a particular question that is asked of it, it is not to evaluate the site.
Well, I go back to the, the first question on a special exception, which says, let me find a page ago, which says, site suitability.
That's the...
Adequate usable space, adequate...
Adequate usable space.
Environmental constraints. It's quite obvious from this plan that everything beyond the yellow, uh, marker of the house is going to be disturbed. I think it's perfectly acceptable and appropriate to ask questions about how that's gonna happen, how, and, and if you, so...
And if you're so confident that the state approved it, and just give us the... Had they given us the approval, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
Actually, you were given the approval. The fact that it is only here for an increase in height suggests that the only thing that is in question is the height of the structure.
We haven't seen a copy of the approval that would say all that information, which would have been helpful to this discussion.
We... If I can just say, we haven't... We don't have the state approvals at this time. We needed to make sure that the... We have it all ready to go, but we needed to know that we would have this footprint was acceptable before we make these submittals. But it is... But it has been designed to satisfy the Shoreland Water Quality Protection Act and the town of Wolfboro's shoreline requirements.
Well, that's a lot different than saying it had approval.
Let me point out that the ZBA cannot condition their approval on any other state or agency approval. And that's by RSA, so...
Oh, I agree, that's perfectly fine. It would be eloquent to see how the porous pavement's nature tied into the height of the question this evening.
Well, it'd be nice to see how the water runoff from the roof is going to affect anything, if at all.
Well, I think that our authority is very limited. It's within that yellow area only, in the area that's being proposed as a new. I was, you know, I was also shocked when I saw the lot, and I was very concerned that, you know, every tree in there is going to be coming down. And, you know, that's why I looked to see whether the steep slope was being met properly, and it is. And in fact, none of that other stuff is under our pervy tonight. And I think that the water that falls on the roof that's being proposed is the same is probably going to be treated better than the water that was falling on the existing. It's in the same place. As much as I hate to say it, we're only responsible for making the decision in that little yellow area.
Agreed.
Okay, well, I have another question then. This little yellow area is going to be expanded with what we see in white. But what I'd like to know about this little yellow area, is it historically a legal site? Was it built legally? Were the porches put on legally? Were the stairs put on legally? Were the additions put on legally?
It's the town's position that we're starting with a legally existing site, yes.
And you can historically document that to us?
To the best of the town's ability.
Because we cannot approve a special exception for an illegal building.
Correct, nor are you being asked to be considering one.
What's that? I'm sorry?
I said you're correct, nor are you being asked to act on one.
So you would say for the record that this is all legal? The pre-existing building is all legally applied for?
Correct.
And the record will show that.
Are there any other questions for the applicant?
Yes, I do have a question, Jim, about the set of stairs on the northernmost property setback. Are those going to be masonry or considered landscaping?
Yeah, they'll be landscaping. They will not be attached to the house, you know, it won't be part of the foundation. So they'll just be landscaped to get back down to grade.
I assume that if that wasn't the case, there would be a variance request there, so...
Correct.
I was just double checking that.
Yep, that is correct.
Any other questions from the board or members of the public? I think I'm going to close the public hearing. I'd entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to accept, to approve this application as submitted.
I'll go ahead and second. Open it for discussion.
Second for discussion. We have, I believe from Tavis, if this application is accepted, he suggests consider the following conditions, 1, 2, 3, and 4. Do we not include one that says... And maybe it does, I haven't looked at it that closely. That will include the necessary state and town approvals? I think you did on the other...
We actually are not allowed to include that in our... As conditions of our approvals.
Well, I almost...
We're not allowed to condition our approval on any other state or agency approvals.
I have heard that, but I thought on the other one that's coming up after this, I thought I saw that in... Maybe not. Okay. But I would amend your motion to say and to include the boilerplate 1, 2, 3, and 4 on the town planner's recommendations.
Good with that, Audrey? Everyone good with that? 1, 2, 3, and 4?
Really just references all the plans that's submitted as part of the application and that they need to pay to record the notice of decision.
Yeah, I was... I guess I'm not totally clear as to... I mean, I didn't read those carefully, so...
It's on the first page of the memorandum down at the bottom.
Yeah. There we go.
I'm good with seconding. Any other discussion on the motion? To approve this variance? Special exception, I mean? Sign now to a roll call vote? Sarah Silk?
Yes.
Audrey Klein?
Yes.
Tim Cronin?
Yep.
Suzanne Ryan?
No.
And Luke Firdenberg, yes. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim, nicely done. Next case this evening. William P. Douglas, 2005 Revocable Trust, 130 Oakwood Road, tax map and lot number 259-49, case number 04.SD-21, public hearing for special exception under Article 4, Section 175-43A1J, replace A2 increase type of nonconformity to more than 25 percent. Okay. Just hold on one second. We'll just do the roll call of who went to the site. Sarah, did you make it down to the site on this one?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Audrey?
Yes, I did.
Tim Cronin?
Yes.
And Suzanne Ryan?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. Mr. Reins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, I'm Jim Reins from White Mountain Survey and Engineering, and I'm here representing the William P. Douglas, 2005 Revocable Trust in their application for a special exception under Article Roman IV, Section 175, 43, 1J, to expand vertically within the setbacks by more than 25 percent. The lot in question is located at 130 Oakwood Road, tax map 259, Lot 49. The lot is 0.6 acres in size with 275 feet along the shore of One of Pasaki. The existing structure is 26 feet from the lake and is 19.4 feet northerly from the northerly boundary line and 16.0 feet from the southerly boundary line. It has an older sewage disposal system, and the lot is 34.4 percent lot coverage with no storm water mitigation. It is a single story. The proposal is to replace the existing single-story home with an attached garage with a two-story home and attached garage. We will put in a new storm water mitigation, we'll put in a new sewage disposal system. And I have outlined on the plan in yellow the areas that are going to be two-story. And as you can see, there is a one-story screened porch, and there is a deck that both lie within the existing one-story footprint. And so there's about 696 square feet forward of the setback line that would be expanded versus the 1,461.9 square feet within the setbacks now. So that's about a 47.6 percent area that is being expanded from one story to two story. So that's more or less an overview. I would be happy to go through the criteria unless the board has questions before I start to do that.
Any questions before he goes through the criteria?
Very clear.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
I have a question, if I may?
Sure, Suzanne, go ahead.
Yeah. It doesn't show on the one with the yellow. Wait a minute. The existing site has one humongous boulder. Are you going to remove that boulder or blast it?
If it's in the way, it's going to be removed. Whether it will be hammered, blasted, or just carried off, I'm not sure. That will be up to the contractor.
Well, it sure looks like it's in the way, but I just... Thank you.
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay, so again, we have eight criteria that we have to demonstrate that we comply with in order to be granted the special exception. The first one is site suitability. And the site is presently developed as a single-family home with an attached garage. This proposal will continue the same use with a more conforming horizontally, while adding a second story to portions of the nonconforming area. The redevelopment will occur in the existing developed areas that have structures and driveway presently. The slope of the land is gently sloping with no steep slopes, and the work is above the floodplain. We are also making the home fully compliant with the northerly setback and increasing the setbacks from the shoreline and the southerly setback. Immediate neighborhood impact, which speaks to excessive trip generation noise or vibration, dust, glare, heat, smoke, fumes, gas, odors, and inappropriate hours of operation. When completed as proposed, this project will not have a detrimental impact on the surrounding and neighboring properties. Since the lot is presently developed, the use post-construction will be similar to the existing use and similar to the abutting properties. There will be noise and traffic during construction, but that is no different than any other construction project and has a finite duration. Number three is that there will be no undue nuisance or serious hazard to pedestrian or vehicular traffic, including the location and design of access ways and off-street parking. And when completed, this project as proposed will not create any undue nuisance or serious hazard to pedestrian or vehicular traffic. In fact, by the elimination of the loop driveway to a single point of access, we will actually enhance the access and safety situation. Number four, the availability of public services and facilities, and this speaks to sewer, water, storm drainage, fire protection, police protection, streets, parks, and schools. The existing home will be served by a new individual sewage disposal system and an onsite well, so there will be no impact to municipal sewer and water for this project. Storm water mitigation and storm drainage will be designed to meet the Shoreland Water Quality Protection Act requirements as part of the process, and we are reducing the percentage of lot coverage from 33.4 percent down to 30.1 percent. The change from a single access point to the existing loop driveway will only change the access to the site for fire and police, and it will remain suitable for the proposed use. And therefore, this proposal will have no negative impact on streets, parks, or schools. The appropriateness of the site and considerations given such as parking, traffic circulation, open space, fencing, screening, landscaping, signage, commercial vehicles, and light impact. Again, since this is a residential use and this criteria is typically intended for projects that require site plan application, it is not particularly applicable to this request. However, the proposed improvements have been designed, working with the existing site and developed to make an appropriate use of the space and improve the overall extent of the horizontal zoning encroachments when compared to the existing conditions. Number six, immediate neighborhood integrity, that the uses or established use patterns be weighed in recent trends in the neighborhood. And approval of this request will be consistent with recent changes in development trends in the neighborhood and will not negatively impact the neighborhood. In fact, there's several similar projects in the neighborhood going on right now. Number seven, the impact on property values, that the proposed use will not cause or contribute to a decline in property values of adjacent properties. This proposal will have no negative impact to the adjacent property values by employing storm water mitigation where none presently exists, reducing the percentage of lot coverage, and installing a new sewage disposal system. We are improving both the groundwater and the surface water quality, which is a benefit to the all property owners and users of the lake. These types of water quality enhancements and new construction typically increase the value of the subject parcel, which has a neutral or positive impact on surrounding values. For this reason, the proposal will not contribute to a decline in property values of the adjacent properties. And last, number eight, the proposed use or structure is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance and the intent of the master plan. And this request is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, which allows for the redevelopment of lots with nonconforming structures and vertical expansion of nonconforming footprints greater than 25 percent by special exception. Since we are improving the existing setback conditions, reducing the percentage of lot coverage, installing a new sewage disposal system and storm water mitigation, and making this request for a special exception for the vertical expansion, this proposal is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance and the intent of the master plan. And since this use is residential and single-family residences are permitted in this zone, it is consistent with the master plan as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reins. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this. Members of the public that wish to make comments or have questions can certainly do so. Board members, do you have any further questions for Mr. Reins or the applicant?
I have the same question I had. The same question I had on the other one. Do we know if this is legally compliant as far as permits being called for any portion of that building in compliance with whatever it was they did?
Yes, this is a legally existing property and structure.
Yes, this is a legally existing property and structure.
Any other questions?
I find this a little easier to swallow, given the site itself, although it's smaller. The only question I had was about the boulder, and good luck to everybody around them when they removed that. And there was a lot of ledge, a lot of ledge on both sites, so I think they'll all get a little surprised when they start messing around with it.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, any further discussion? I'd entertain a motion to approve this special exception.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the special exception for, where is it? For case 04SE21, Tax Map 259-049, 130 Oakwood Road, with the planners' four conditions as stated in the memorandum of March 19th.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Seeing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Sarah Silk?
Yes.
Audrey Klein?
Yes.
Tim Cronin?
Yep.
Suzanne Ryan?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next case, Elizabeth and Trevor Peers. I hope I said that last name correctly. 289 Camp... Thank you. 289 Camp School Road, Camp, Math, and Lot 26210. Case 05-V-21, public hearing for variance under Article... There's no number in there. Section 175-64C for setbacks for proposed garage, 289 Camp School Road. Travis, should there be an article number referenced in that?
Be a what?
Couldn't hear you, Tim. Could you say that again? In the agenda, it says, "Public hearing for variance under Article..." There's just a line there, there's no number.
175-64A1 and 175-64A1 or 2D.
Perfect, thank you.
Front and side yard setbacks. And the applicant is online, Luke.
The applicant is virtual tonight. And just, we'll do a roll call of who was able to go to the site. Sarah, did you get down there?
Yes, I did, thank you.
Audrey?
Yes, I did.
Tim Cronin?
Yes, sir.
And Suzanne, did you able to get down there?
Yes, yes, I did.
And I was also there today. Okay, the applicant is... Would you like to speak to the application?
So I'm Libby Peers. My husband, Trevor Peers. We are applying for variance, as you said, in hopes of building a small garage at the top of our driveway. As I hope you noticed in visiting the site, we have a steep driveway, and we've learned from being in residence for part of the winter that it's quite difficult to navigate consistently in ice and snow. The reasons and the criteria, I guess we tried to address in our application, I guess proceed as follows. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest because the garage is as far from the lake as possible. We see it as approximately 160 feet from the lake and as far from neighboring properties as possible. Positioning will allow for ample room for all uses of the shared private road. And as I mentioned in the application, we sometimes are forced to park the car at the top of our driveway in a little cutout, and having a garage where we could put our car, I think, would make life easier for those trying to plow the road in winter and for others generally trying to navigate. As we said in the application, the garage will be quite small, 20 by 20, with a low roof pitch, and will be painted or sited to be as unobtrusive as possible. And the garage will be out of the sightlines of both of our abutting neighbors on either side to also limit any chance of this being a disruption. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because we are focused on preserving the beauty of our property and the area that we're fortunate enough to live in, and we see this as no way compromising the lived experience of our current and we hope future neighbors... In fact, I would say everyone has been universally supportive of the project, asking why we haven't done it sooner. Natural justice is done because the setback at issue abuts one neighbor's property only along the top of our shared driveway, and as I said, no way limits use of the driveway and is out of sight when our neighbors and residents come. And approval of the variance obviously will allow us to live in our house in a way that will make it far easier to navigate winters. The value of surrounding property will not be diminished because the garage, as we said, will not impede passage along our private road or interfere with neighbor sightlines. There are several garages along our road. I don't know if you managed to continue on past our house, but both houses and garages sit right along our private road, and we've heard that there's no problem having those so close to the line. And then literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship because without a garage, we would find it difficult to navigate year-round residency, something we're very excited about, starting in May this year. And we are hoping for a safe and reliable location for parking our car that doesn't require navigating the driveway when it seems appropriate to do so. The special conditions, as we said, of our driveway constraints imposed by our septic system, you might have seen the stakes on our septic field that showed the actual location of the system. And then no capacity to build on the non-lake side of our property, so even farther back from the lake. I think that's all. If there are any questions, we're happy to address them, but we see this basically as a request for reasonable use of our property.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Board members?
I have one. I have one question that I'd like to ask of the applicant. Where the garage was in the back, it looked like the back left-hand corner, there was a metal pipe coming out of the ground. It almost looked green. Is that a vent for the septic field?
Um, what, I don't...
No, there are two vents to the septic field. One's down close to the shed that you might have noticed, and the other's across the septic field between the field and the lake just before the steep decline. There's no other vent.
The proposed location is well clear of any septic...
The pipe is very close to the telephone pole because I saw it as well as him, although with...
It almost looks like a pole that you'd put a driveway light on.
Oh, so the actual electric pole is...
No, I think you're turning it. Where's the vent? Oh, I'm sorry.
On the flat surface area where you had marked out with the stakes where you want to put your garage, just to the left of that, maybe 20, 30 feet, it looks like a metal pole, a tube coming out of the ground.
Right, you know, I think you might be looking at the stakes that were put in position to mark the septic field and not the stakes that were used to mark the garage. We've not been in residence in a while, and I'm told that some of the two back stakes for the garage may have been knocked over. So this will not be built on the field. It will be very close to the first opportunity to drive onto the field.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry for confusion with our states.
You did a nice job.
Any other questions for the board?
I have a question.
Okay.
On your special conditions of the property, I noticed you said the picture of the driveway that would distinguish it from other properties, and actually, there's a property just past yours that's practically in the street, and you go down her driveway to get into her garage underneath her house, which is probably just as bad. However, I think a special condition of your property that you did not mention here, if you look at the drawing included, I don't know, right there, when you get up by the street, the shape of the lot is very constricting.
Well, that's the problem we thought when we tried to decide where to put it. The only other place was down by the shed, and that seemed to impinge on the neighbor down there, who'd been very, very present in their back area, as you say, which is right up against the road. So we thought this is the best one. The people on that side we share the driveway with and their house is pretty far down, and I don't think they'll be bothered by that. Or I know they won't because they've said so, but they shouldn't be bothered by the existence of a small garage.
The constriction of the road is no small thing. It's, well, quite frankly, I'm not even sure how the oil trucks get down through there. It's a very small road, and it definitely is a problem if you were to try to park on the edge of that street.
Yes.
It definitely is an issue.
They make it down the road, but it's a neighborhood event.
Getting fat, it's not over.
There's no turnaround.
You have to go all the way down, but the road gets worse the farther you go.
Are there any other questions for the applicants?
I think the board should go through the five criteria for the record.
Absolutely. I'll close the public hearing. Board members, you want to go through the five criteria? Number one, variance will not be contrary to the public interest because...
I would say it doesn't alter the essential character of the neighborhood or the spirit of the ordinance. Yep, a single-family dwelling is permitted in this area, and a garage is a very common element for that. So I think it complies with one and two.
Agreed. Substantial justice is done because...
The benefit to the applicant doesn't outweigh the negative effects to the general public.
Does outweigh.
I think that's met because I think actually the benefit to them is about equal to the benefit to the neighbors and anyone else that has to get down that road, keep them off of the street.
I was picturing going down that in the winter.
Whenever you want to thrill, just come out after a snowstorm.
Yeah, I'll bet.
I can't imagine.
The values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. I mean, it's just going to enhance the neighborhood. The garage is in the best place in the property potentially for where they could put it, so it's obviously not going to diminish the property values surrounding this surrounding homes, so applies there.
This one's sort of a wash. We have no expert testimony for or against, so it basically is moot.
Little enforcement of the provisions.
Although other properties have similar small attached garages that are on the other side of the road or not directly attached to their houses, so I don't think it would affect the values in any way negatively.
Quite common.
And little enforced by the provision, the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship because...
Obviously, the special conditions that are on that site lead to the need to do what they are trying to alleviate the problem that they have with the physical site.
I would add the steep slope plus the location of the septic field. There's a lot of steep slopes around there, but they don't have any other reasonable options as far as putting it on the lot, so that's the hardship.
Agreed.
Thank you very much for enhancing our presentation. We'll know better next time, but we have no other plans to build.
I would make a motion to approve the application for... What did I do with it? For the placement of the garage. I made myself a note here on Travis's... Travis's... Shoot. Hang on a second, because I want to include what we had.
That one was on the backside of the...
Yeah. Oh, shoot, it's on the backside?
Yeah, it's one through six.
Well, too much paper. Well, let's get into the record. A variance from Article 175-64A1 and 2 on 289 Camp Road, Tax Map 262-10. There was something I wanted to add to that that Travis had.
Case number?
It was... Oh, here it is. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the case number. And to include Travis's memo items one through six with special attention to number FOA, which says, "Construction shall be completed in accordance with the dimensions shown on the approved plan set referenced in the planner's review above. As amended to the date of approval, a foundation certificate stamped by SEVIA shall be required." I think that's a very important condition, and I would like to amplify that by saying what the applicant put in their application was, "For no more than a 20 by 20 garage with a roof pitch of 512."
You got it.
I would like to...
Go ahead.
I would like to... Did somebody second that?
Not yet.
Before you second it, can you add case number 05-V-21?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I would like to amend it.
Okay.
I would like to amend it to remove number three of the planner's... What are they called? Conditions of approval.
Are you good with that?
I know I've seen that before.
Well, it has been on them in the past, but I don't believe that it's proper. And I think I can refer you to RSA 67433, number six.
Are we good with...
Can somebody read that? Can somebody read that RSA?
Yeah. The zoning board of adjustment shall not require submission of an application for or receipt of a permit or permits from other state or federal governmental bodies prior to accepting a submission for its review or rendering its decision. to accepting a submission for its review or rendering its decision.
Well, if you read this, it's asking that all of these things be received, including but not limited to the Chinatown Borough, but it'll be happening after they get their permission. So I'm not sure about the technicality of that wording. I just don't know.
I put the condition in, I read it differently than Audrey did. It applies whether it's a condition or not. So if the board doesn't want the condition, I have no concerns with it.
Okay. Does that amendment on the, to amend the motion, does it have a second?
I don't see any, I don't see any harm leaving it in. We're not giving, we're not giving the approval conditioned solely on that, we're just saying after they come for their approving of the application, the staff is recommending that we consider the following conditions. I don't know, I find some comfort in knowing that the applicant is expected that those things are going to be required, but if it's totally illegal to do that, then of course we shouldn't, but we've been doing it for the last 10 years. We've been doing it for the last 10 years.
Audrey, what'd you say? I couldn't hear you.
Let's get, you know, if it's a question, let's get the attorney's opinion on that.
I'd like to see it stay in and then have it going forward. If it's improper, then just take it out. But I'd like to see it stay in for this application and also then going forward to get the attorney's opinion and go from there.
Okay, so you would, okay. So is there no second to the amendment then, or is there a second and we're going to?
No, there was, I seconded it.
You seconded, Tim seconded, okay, so this is the amendment to remove?
Travis said he had no issue removing it, so for tonight's case, if we do that, then get a decision on how to move forward with the future case.
I couldn't hear what he said. Could you hear what he said?
He's fine without it.
He's fine without it?
He's fine without.
Okay.
I'm fine without.
Yeah, I'd like to just give the approval and with those conditions and let it go at that, and then deal with it down the road on another application. By then, Travis will have found out what he cannot do.
Audrey, are you okay with that?
Well, I mean, we've got a motion and a second, so why don't we vote on that? And the motion is to remove that for this case.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded. I'll do a roll call vote. Sarah?
No.
Audrey?
Yes.
Tim?
Yep.
Suzanne?
No.
And I'll be yes. So the motion passes 3 to 2.
So what I understand now is that the applicant, the motion that currently remains is a motion to approve as submitted.
Correct.
With conditions one, two, three. I'm sorry, one, two, four becomes three, five becomes four, and six becomes five.
Yep.
With four amplified to include no more than 20 by 20 and a roof pitch 512.
Yes.
So I'll make, I'll make that motion as stated by Travis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Audrey?
Yes.
Tim?
Yep.
Suzanne?
Yes.
And myself is a yes as well. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay, next we have review of the minutes. Those are the minutes dated 2/1, 2021. Those out.
No, sir.
I don't have any.
I'll make a motion to accept as written. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor, Sarah?
Yes.
Audrey?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Informational item? Travis, did you have an informational item? Did we cover that with the?
There's an informational handout in the packet. So anyone that picked up their packet, there's a piece in there, it was just after the minutes. If you don't have one, I could make some more copies available and let you know when they're ready. It's a little postcard about Housing and Economy Snapshot. You're invited to join us virtually April 15, 4 to 5:30, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other, any other information that anyone wants to discuss?
Will we be looking at that rules of procedure at our next meeting then?
I emailed out the rules of procedure, emailed the rules of procedure from your website so you can review them, and if you'd like to have that on the agenda, I will coordinate with the chair.
Yes, the bylaws and the voting of officers first on the agenda next time.
Okay. I would just like to get those rules of procedure before the Friday, before the meeting, just so we can go over them. If you could just email them out ahead.
Travis will do that, yes.
Thank you. Can I ask, Travis, is the latest changes to the zoning amendments or those already on the code online?
They are not.
Has something updated?
Are there any other questions? Any other? Okay, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Sarah?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion?
I think Tim made the motion for me.
None. Sarah?
Yes.
Audrey?
Yes.
Tim?
Yep.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.